Good evening, I'm gonna call this meeting for the Region 15 Board of Education Order for Monday, April 28th. Will we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The true republic which stands on a nation under God, that is well, just as long. Mission of Region 15, a collaborative community committed to excellence is to educate every student to be productive, ethical, and engaged in a global society. Through proven and innovative learning experiences supported by its strong community whose decision making is based in the best interest of all students. We will start with our student representatives, Ms. Tess Girkens and Mr. Brendan Finn.
Alright, good evening everyone. As for Tom, right? Last. Our seal of by literacy, by literacy students were recognized and this week is Spring Spirit Week until May 2nd, which is also the day of our pep rally. As for Memorial Middle School, their eighth grade students just returned from their Washington DC trip last week. And their fifth grade classes from LMS and MES will be coming to visit MMS this Friday. May 2nd for an orientation and tour of the building. Thank you to the art department, Ms. Pinto and Mrs. Bahatcha for a wonderful art show this past weekend as well. And for Roche and Bowe Middle School, their spring sports are in full swing. Thank you to their art department for a spectacular art show this past weekend. The RMS Rondo production of Susan Paul Jr. is scheduled for Thursday, May 1st. They're excited to see the talents of their students on stage. Ingrade World Language students will enjoy a cultural restaurant experience which will allow them to practice their target language in an authentic setting. The Learning Center students have visited Guardian Farms last week to meet their adopted cat, Fearless. And the RMS PTO has been very active in recent weeks for bus driver appreciation last week and the RMS plant sale next week. Eighth grade students are off to Washington DC next week. For the monuments, he has been sighted with interest with their breed of old peers.
Alright, thank you Tess. Moving on to the elementary schools. Long Meadow wrapped up the month of April with lots of memorable events. The PTO hosted a Scholastic Book Fair and every student wanted lots of their books. They also welcomed the talented author Deborah Freeman, who shared her secrets for writing. Also, the family fun banquet night was a great success. At PS, it's been exciting and busy end of the month. Last week, the PTO hosted Dancing Under the Stars. They also donated to the Southbury Food Pantry, held a Bus Driver Appreciation Breakfast. And welcomed Idi Saka, an award-winning West African dance and music performance artist and teacher. Mr. Saka shared the rich culture of Ghana with students and a truly memorable experience. At Middlebury Elementary School, they've enjoyed a number of exciting events recently that have enriched the school community. The school chorus performed a wonderful concert for families and friends, highlighting their hard work, musical talent, and dedication. Also at MES, students challenged staff in an exciting basketball game. Students were also treated to a high-energy assembly featuring a professional beatboxer from the Academy of Voice. And then also in the past couple of weeks, visiting authors shared their experiences, creative processes, and their love of storytelling. Encouraging students to read more and explore their own writing talents. Coming from the Fine Applied and Technical Arts Department, just want to give a big thank you to everyone who attended the spectacular art show this past weekend. There were thousands of attendees who came to view the thousands of art pieces on display. And then from the Athletics Department, spring athletics are in full swing, so good luck to the athletes for finishing up their practices.
Alright, thank you so much.
Not sure, that's us students that not can play my report.
Did you have a question?
Just, and I asked this last year. So you're both here obviously because of qualifications and Principal Jones switched in the slide and. Be great if on the last meeting, so if you have the time to think about it, the last meeting that you were present. If there's anything you want us to know or about, I mean, you've had 12 years here, you're in the school district, it's your representative. Of high-quality caliber students, you know. What has, what would you want to tell us after 12 years that you think we should know? I mean, you know, it could be good things, it could be bad things, instructive stuff. So you could maybe, just, I mean, like a couple sentences. What would you want to let us know as you, you know, part of it?
Yeah, definitely, that'd be great. Give us some thoughts on each other.
Do you have any other questions for?
To rest means to be brutally honest.
Alright, thank you very much. Next, we have student recognition. We'll carry over to Ms. Spears.
Excuse me, Mr. Nelson, but join me, we're gonna recognize a couple of students tonight.
Stay here while we talk nice about you. Alright, so Destiny and Sophia were recently recognized by CAS, which is the Connecticut Association of Schools for. The Arts Awards, they think about every year, they give out one to each, two to each high school, one for performing arts award for five or four awards. And these are our recipients from Region 15, Pop Park High School this year. Something new this year is that they did ask their teachers to write a role bio about them, so I'll read that out loud. So Destiny here is first. Is creative, intelligent, sensitive, hardworking student with a winning attitude full of drive and perseverance that goes unparalleled. She has been at the top of her class when it comes to creative thinking. She can understand complex concepts and solve creative problems. She has always been able to manage her times superbly and produce outstanding work. She has been a role model for her peers in all of her art classes. Congratulations. Sophia starts off, the amazing, the amazing Sophia was a tri-AM officer for two years. Chamber singer for three years, and then coral for four years. She has worked in props crew for one year, she was props crew head for one year, assistant director and stage manager for two years with theater. This fall, from talent runner to the rare opportunity as a student, as a student to direct the fall main stage show. And she is heading to college next year at UVA directing program. So we want to congratulate both of you guys. That's done, the yard's just out. I'm gonna read directly again from a teacher. This is Sloan wrote that she wanted to take the opportunity to notify me at this point, but all of you. That Julian, a 10th grader, imposed a piece called The Bird and the Leaf. Which is a string of quintet and carol piece, and it was selected to be presented at the NAFME, which is the National Association for Muslim Educators. Eastern Division Conference Youth Musical Showcase. This is an even bigger deal because he was selected not just from the entire state of Connecticut, but also the entire eastern region of the United States. Julian will present his composition on this past Saturday, the 26th at the convention center in Hartford. This is Sloan, Miss Sloan, could not be more proud of you, as she writes here. Of Julian below, she did send a recording of it, which I can send out to all of you, but better than that, Julian is here to perform it live for us this evening, so.
Alex, thank you, that is beautiful, thank you.
So, three individuals representing much greater water arts program, which I wanted to take just a little bit to thank all of you that came onto the art show this past weekend. They supported us there, hopefully see that the talent that's all over Region 15 and then all of you guys and what you do helps support that, so thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have security and crisis management, Superintendent Smith and Mr. Martino.
Yeah, introduction to security. This is the screen that's drawing on. Alright, so I'm gonna turn most of this over to Mr. Keener to walk through. This will be a combination of questions kind of maybe addressed in the past, some of the updates that we've thought over. For enhancements we've put in our schools so far this year, and then opportunity for some questions.
Alright, just kind of, again, just sort of say kind of a refresh and update and kind of current things in place. So obviously, we did a major upgrade to our phone system about three or four years ago, which had caller ID and made nine more accessible throughout the building. Those significant update. School dismissal manager, elementary parents know that's our pickup app that we use, our section super handles for verifying, you know, kids pick up onto the line. If there's a number in the folder, I feel like I don't know else, we use it in the home, but I don't know, it was super handed in the last three or four years. Rave software, I'll touch on it a bit here, and I have an example too. That is a security app that basically allows to intercommunication with a staff member, and also allows the staff member to issue a. Either a panic button, like a panic button, or a medical back button, so you push those different options on your phone. So I think it was kind of a panic button, but for your phone. It's geofenced, so it obviously, if you're off property, hit the button, which is call 911 like any of us would normally. But inside the building, it tracks locations, and there's also a way to do a communication kind of all-call staff will get that. We're just sort of bust rolling it out. There's a little more complicated route than originally thought, but it puts our staff probably later this week to roll that out. Pretty big technology, I see Bethel, Newtown, there's several districts that they're using it, so pretty. School Messenger, that's been around for many years, addition with all of our incident alerts and obviously all of our emails and snow alerts throughout the year. Walkie-talkies, we continue to kind of refresh and review these. You know, the walkie-talkies, a lot of the key folks in the district have a like a red button, Milwaukee, so that actually connects directly to the PD, almost like additional panic button. That works to the walkie-talkie frequency, it also allows communication back to the police department and to police cars when you're coming on scene. They can switch that channel for instant communications with the police department as well, and also works with the rovers, so it's kind of a big interface and way to, you know, so that's a pretty cool. Security tools, obviously are a bad system that the employees have when the card swipes. Our lobby guard, this significant upgrades, new tablets on the lobby guard system. There's still adjustment to it, the iPads, a little bit kind of put a cradle in the back of it for scanning. So that gets scanned and out to see if there's an event that happens, alert team goes out, tells the administrators. If there's any issues that pop up, they're back and checking the door, and also allows tracking for emergencies as well. Buses, we actually have a significant upgrade coming out to parents in the next couple of days. The first few app, we're migrating over to a new first few app. We have to do it really to do some of the summer rollover stuff, so the email going out. Kind of one app is gonna go away, have to reinstall a new app. But obviously that allows for the bus tracking app, a lot of parents do use today. And obviously GPS and camera systems on our buses today. Also includes some audio recordings on the buses.
So, 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 parent tracking, tracking app.
For the bus. The buses, yeah, definitely. There's a little delay, but pretty close on the tracking. And the new tablets that go on the bus is actually nice too because it links the driver when they log in and download the route. And it has like a little audio thing, so it's kind of looks like kind of GPS in a car, but, but not as simple. Facilities items that we're either doing or underway, obviously all eight locations in central office have cameras and recording available. The window film, we continue to add, we have some additional pieces going in, even going into the spring and the summer. To add additional window film, that is a resistant glass in key locations, or you're seeing some. Principals will request their teachers in time, I'd like to have this added, and we work with the vendor, kind of slowly continue to grow up the footprint of those, of those areas. Just that's our more secure, more visibility. One of the key pieces that we've kind of run, gone into is our PA systems. So, high school PA, which was pretty much, there was dead zones in it, there was other issues inside it, so we did a full upgrade. Rolled over to a fully new system, which allows for, we can actually adjust volumes now and tie it into the fire panel. The all-call system works as it should, so we really went from analog now to a digital system. Then also now with the bell system, so we could actually. Dr. Jones could actually like modify the bell systems on the fly, and extra wave files into it, so. High school administrators have lots of fun with new bell system there. So, for hand, Memorial Middle School, that is, there was an upgrade for that system. And the PA systems are just very old in their architecture, they're what, analog? Can I kind of say, think of like your television like 15 years ago, super grainy, TV super bright, so kind of the same thing even in the PA systems. So Memorial did replace them kind of coming spring into the summer for their system. We're also looking at two of some of our, our shops that have like, our wood shop and our cone have a lot of noise. The idea of adding like a, almost like a flashing strobe, so that there's an announcement over the PA, they can see it. I'm gonna put that in the high school, yeah, but I'm gonna talk to the vendor, come in, not super expensive, but again, it's handy if you're using their saws in the shop, can't hear anything. So that's, that's a nice technology, so PA system, a big upgrade. Criminal exterior doors, we've done a lot of work on this, I mean, obviously throughout the day, ASO, as far as checking doors, checking prop doors. Monitoring, monitoring events, security alarms, they're active every evening, all our schools are the same armed alarms, tied back to central monitoring stations. The card access, the perimeter doors, we've also added some cards. We did migrate that system this summer to a new system, kind of again leaving the TVs from 15 years ago. And the new system now has a cloud-based solution, we can actually add additional locations to it for areas for, so for card access. For example, we're adding it down at a metal building, it's a shed for an emergency. Just an example, and also it allows staff better access to schools, there's some off the recess, or she unboiled, allow them to come quicker. So again, added up maybe six or seven doors, and a few more coming this summer. We did also rekey all the doors. I think every so many years, kind of look at this exercise, newly try to hold back on physical keys, guys, they're easy to. Get lost, or they're bad, so they act late in the minute, and then went to a very specific key, we can't go to home, people make a copy, we can even actual. Certainly certain vendors get issued that key strike, it's a very unique key in its design, so it's kind of handy too. So, this stuff is great fun. I probably just want to touch on, which I thought was pretty neat, I was telling Mr. Smith, the vigilance system, which is now in. Let me think, two middle schools, Long Meadow, more Middlebury Elementary, and I was just processing, put it in Pop Park Elementary, game field. If you look at some of the schools, it looks like actually UFO, it's like a precinct panorama zoom, so it's kind of actually three or four feeds in one. And just the ability of clarity and the ability to search and log events has been very handy, available to hard phones, so a lot of. Technology there, actually, I mean, I was talking about a box, and I did run the exact same system, which is pretty interesting. Different box, so it's probably a few more features than we have in theirs, they get the, you know, how the poker chips, but I was pretty surprised I looked up and saw the same, we have the exact same. So pretty cool, that's been really great, we're just wrapping up. Pop Park Elementary and Game Field Elementary, and that was an actual security grant. And that's actually a picture of the rave app that's at staff, and we'll see on their phone, so can I use some choices on events? If got to be an event happened in the classroom, hallway, you've got items you can push there. And there's also the kind of the bottom that staff assists that you can push that, and then it sends it all call out to everyone else inside the app as well. I mean, it kind of gives a little, like private communication between like the principal and staff. So if there's something going on, they'll post a message or like email, they can shoot it back to the staff, so a pretty cool technology there. And that'll be coming over the next couple of years, so all that. Kind of, you know, where the money comes from, I was always mindful to visit those pieces. Your armed security, obviously a 10, 10 district wide. Your Middlebury Rover, which obviously covers the three, the three schools and also those traffic in front of Middlebury Elementary School. Southbury does have a youth officer, which also branches into Rover role, which does those three. Those three schools, and obviously the SRO, or the youth education high school. A few grant opportunities that we've been working through is obviously these school security grants that we receive for the camera systems. We also have one to do additional upgrades in high schools, they're working our way through. Kind of capitalized that we worked through 2020, the phone system upgrade. The camera systems have been at 24, 25, we did a big storage upgrade for storage of data in '22. And the security got pretty truly just ongoing, they're saying the security film, again, as I just quote with staff, they kind of review and kind of add, whether it's. You know, additional card swipe on a door, on a recess, or those sorts of things, that's kind of always, always, always kind of going. Kind of human capital pieces, obviously background checks, we do that on employees that are hired, volunteers as well. Again, some would run through just the regular rapper system, obviously if you're hired by the district, though, you're fully free, you're paid, you go to DCF background checks. Sectional fundish registry as well, administering staff training. We do obviously a lot of lockdown drill, security drill training into a staff, which did one every day at Memorial. So it's pretty common. Obviously, we do review all the guidelines for school security, which since they statute it, apply to all those findings and filings we have here. Full base, that's just kind of again, a little recap, but not, obviously, your high school SRO. Your armed security folks, they go through annual weapons training every year, we go to the southern range, and we follow by with their firearm. And then obviously also go through their yearly state training. And actually as well, there's actually a, I'm gonna strip the number of years, maybe sorry, five years, they go for a new site that I talked about as well. When they're hired as well, we also go through a cycle of that, so a lot of steps to go through that. There was talk at the state about adding more trainings, I haven't heard any more on that, they were gonna add two more. Haven't heard much more on that event, but I do know they're talking about that. I think our weapons training is really good, the way they do it, plus it's just another refresh of all together, you kind of practice around drills, so it's a, it's a, it's a good, they just want to hold that. Going through all those events, which is good. Obviously, the annual monthly drills, all the schools do drills at different times, which is very good, staff and safety teams, or your mental health teams. Dr. Schrader talks a lot about those items in our schools. Staff and subs, we handbooks, obviously, you know, we want staff members and subs coming, we want to make sure they, they're aware of their calls and different drills that are run, or events that happen in schools. Obviously, the roaming officer, which adds kind of additional outside presence, and you know, obviously, they are now. The middle rate officers in our schools a little more, they've been visiting more. Obviously, the Southbury youth officer lives in one of the schools as well, so kind of, you're kind of seeing those folks kind of working through the buildings to understand familiar faces and all sorts of things, so kind of. Put some that front, Josh and I, pretty regularly, were chief Rillo and chief Ely, as far as just kind of keep them abreast of things that happen. And obviously, kind of towards him, obviously, Steve Schnell is the emergency manager for Southbury. He does also cover the emergency drills for the. Middlebury schools as well, and sits on a number of the school security committees. Steve and I talked about drills and different planning. Also, obviously, all the state security plans get filed with Steve, we work our way through any updates that happen to those every year. The Fire Marshal's Office, I know particularly both Fire Marshal Bureau and Derek and Southbury, talking pretty regularly about different things they find in our schools. You know, they've been, they're present for most of our drills, we had an issue with one of the schools today where they thought the enunciator on the upper, that one of the new fire panels was too loud. So they adjusted on that, so that's been really helpful, a lot of their presence in the novel things as well. This state statute now requires them to be present at all our drills, where years ago. It wasn't, they were still there most of the time, but now they're there for all of them. And then obviously, they do orders in the drills, they help with even timing out of schools if. In evacuation, they should get to a certain point, a certain amount of time before their school, like Fire Marshal doesn't have criteria they work for, so that's stuff there. You know, other than that, I think, I think the district committed out of this, we did over the day here. You know, it's been talked about, we've had armed security here for I think six or seven years. They are definitely just a part, part of our buildings and a part of the general, you know, home of the place. We have a good redundancy now with abilities, there's an officer, an ASO is out of the building to locate a sub through, so there's always coverage in those schools. So that works really well in a system, but yeah, we're, you know, kind of stay ahead.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Martino?
Sure, I have three questions. So, the app to, out of there. Can you speak a little bit to what the requirements are for the phones from a lock or authentication perspective?
There is, it's, it's the same as, so the, any alerts that are pushed have to be held down more, so in other words, it's not a. It can't be inadvertently like touched, so when you go to push the buttons on it, it has to hold probably four to six seconds on it. There is, the user would have to put a. An additional password for if they wanted to, but if it was used outside, off the geo fence, because every school, we would draw our property lines on it. It would just trigger a 911 event, so for example, staff and I read a kid playing on their phone or something, they hit it, it would put our school to lockdown, you'd have to actually on, on property tap that event.
I'm more concerned if someone who shouldn't have access to that phone gets the phone.
Oh, 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 yeah, with same, same security, so whatever fingerprint or however that person accesses that phone.
It's like someone in a. Who's creating harm in the school who has access to it, like how can that be managed?
I mean, if you.
You know, would it be shut down, like?
Yeah, yes, every, everything is, there's a basic, a user list that exists, you can deactivate, staff and I left, for example, we just go in and deactivate that. We're actually automated that for our system.
So I realize I've asked three questions, that was.
No, that's. No, that's.
Sorry.
That's like, it's like second one, first guy.
Um, is there an extension of that utilization, you said it was geo fenced, but I'm thinking in terms of you have. A- after hours activities, whether you're in this building or on our campuses, or in situations where sports teams are going to other campuses. How are we ensuring that there's appropriate communication channels? So that we as a, as a district are aware of what's happening with our students, either on premises or off, and as a follow-up to that. Um, is there anything, should an emergency arise, is there also an app? So parents can be appropriately alerted rather than getting invited now?
So, so, yeah, so this is, this communication management is. Police, school communications, this does not have a parent facing side to it, or a student facing side. This is strictly a staff, and it would not work outside of our campus from a. Alert standpoint, except for the nine-one-one call to just. The dovetail to this will be the, um, shift. From away from school messenger to, um, a different communication tool that will start rolling out. Really, all of next year, staff are gonna start getting some reviews over, over the next few weeks. That will have, um, communication abilities that are group-specific, that will be phone, text, email, um. A little other communication, um, but, but more than just email or a phone call, and that can be done so that. Um, we can build specific groups that would be off campus, so we're going on, uh, like sports teams, the, the situation that created some of this was this very specific sports team. We didn't have the ability to say, hit, like, alert this team. Uh, this new, the shift, the new tool will allow us to build any group based on anything.
And that's coming in twenty-six?
It, it'll be, well, we're gonna start training staff on it. Probably in the next few days, staff are gonna get email tomorrow, but we're not gonna roll it out to parents officially from the beginning of next year.
Uh, the, when is, the P S G S, uh, those are, if you were doing. Equipments in, you're doing wiring, you'll probably see those live, I guess, I guess mid-May, I guess.
And then the, um, the money that's mentioned, the grants, another eighty-eight thousand for six schools, that's not P H S.
Yeah, correct, the lower one is P H S.
And then, but they're both fifty-fifty.
Yep, that's where, yeah, we've matched our money, we're in a certain condition, we actually held up because the Southbury PD transition with the state police.
Okay, but so, yeah, so the grants went eighty-eight, and we spent, like, right, no, but that's not out of. Out of the.
Operating, good operating.
So it's out of the operating, not the. Thank you, and then, um. Thank you for mentioning ten twenty-two, man, uh, just, so you mentioned the, um, school security plan submitted yearly in the statute, which just says that there has to be. Um, a security vulnerability assessment over two years, is that just something you.
Yeah, uh, Steve has an app where you kind of go through a checklist, it'd be done by, by an officer or someone.
Because he, that's not.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty rare.
Um, and then, um. It's kind of too hard, uh, what? I assume that you mentioned, so if new people get hired, then they get, like, new teachers, for example, they start a couple days early, like. Fall, August, is that what, like, they get orientation to safety?
Yeah, the principals do that usually, it's kind of a whole one, until maybe.
And then lastly, um. When does the, so the youth school has the school climate committee, that they're supposed to, um. Collect and evaluate information relating to instances of disturbing or threatening behavior that may not meet the definition of bullying. Uh, they report this information to the districts. Um, does that?
How about that? So I have to, like, I was, I know the security means being quartered, I think those are the means, we need to move there for.
So I'm a psycho, but, so what, there's, um, multiple, so Mr. Martino and I just talked about having a. Um, more discreet definition, because what happens is the school climate committee, bullying committee, especially some of our schools are small, we're seeing people on every committee. And so how do we differentiate some questions, like the protocols that are asked, uh, but I would say at least monthly, and then the, um. All of our school administrators, resource officers, mental health professionals, uh, have been trained in protocols and how to identify risk assessment. We wouldn't wait to report that in, to the meeting happening, if something happened, we could do that assessment immediately, and then escalate that to the appropriate. Um, direction based on what that assessment said.
But like, if there were a meeting, like, that would be an opportunity, like, if someone, the committee in this particular school noticed some trends or some. Figures that were increasing that, that.
Yeah, we do track that along with, like, attendance data, which, well, data, that's part of that assessment that happens.
So you talked about the public address, the P A upgrades, um, Opera, High School Memorial, Middle School, other than obviously. P E S and G E S, because they're.
Motion both lists are possible, um, we're kind of valuing. Yeah, um, and I believe, well, the challenge, all this is Longmales original, like, they're all, they all sit in their original state, so. Um, right now, it's a fifteen thousand a building, compared to the behavior, which is actually pretty reasonable, uh, I had thought numbers of a lot higher than that, so they, they worked really well.
And the other question I had, had to do with substitutes, um. Do we have like a fail-safe, so you have a substitute teacher, and I know sometimes it's hard to get subs, um, is there like a backup plan for a teacher's absence, to make sure there's somebody in the building? That goes to help that teacher in case of a, you know, lockdown or whatever, everyone's aware that there's a sub in, you know. Grade two classroom A, um, is that something, hopefully?
That's communicated out pretty well, and, and I mean, most of our subs too are not, like, I mean, again, theory, everyone starts, everyone starts a day one sub, and a lot of our folks have been around, so I think they're, they're pretty well versed in it. But, yeah, I do think they're, they're mindful and new people start.
Well, our, our substitute tracking system allows us to run a report that would say, like, who are the subs in this building today, so in. In case of a drill, like, that's easy, right, but if something was production, um, we could run that report from, from any computer, it's web-based, we can run that report and say. Everybody accounted for, and here are the subs, you know, the school secretaries would have that, but there's redundancy, so it doesn't fall on that one.
They get a key, the kind of emergency plan, like, they have a big old package.
Right, Heather Tore, and then Tom.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. No, sorry. Um. Wanted to ask about bodyguard.
Yeah.
Um, just because I, I, I heard some buzz about slower, you know, like the Southbury.
It, it is, it, it's, it's not perfect, um. But we've also kind of looked at what else exists out there, and it does take a little bit on the. Getting it behind the iPad and get it just right, to get a kind of a cradle on the mound, um, they've added a few upgrades, it, it definitely takes a little bit of, you know. Angling the license is just the right way to get the pop, um, we have, like, visited what else exists, and a lot of people use bodyguards, so it's kind of.
That's what I wanted to ask.
Yeah.
There was another, like.
Yeah, always looking, we're not, we're not linked to a contract, uh, iPads weren't super expensive, so it's not like it'd be a lot, but yeah, at least for the moment, that's, that's what we said.
Good.
Um, so, couldn't help but notice a lot of the new software technology upgrades, uh, we're making. Everything comes with an app now.
Yeah.
So we talked about rave, you know, the mass system, our school has an app, um, Messenger has an app, um, so my first question is. I'm assuming when teachers are using these apps, they're using them on their personal devices, we don't provide devices for restaurants, so, yeah. So the next question would be, um, what do we do in terms of device management to make sure that those personal devices are, um, secure?
One, kind of ask. Yeah, well, one of the challenges we had with Ray originally was, we kind of thought it was a, how you say, here's an email, like, here's a code. And put our code into your app when we're done. The problem is actually, we have to kind of allow the app to give a push to your phone, send your number, push it over, and we didn't want to send both, both staff numbers, because then in real, reality, I'm kind of. Like, giving your number with third party, so we thought, so we're actually just, like, a, kind of opt-in feature, so we're gonna push those over, um, but yeah, that, in the management piece, that was, um. Again, we can't require people install on their phone, is, is, is your personal cell phone.
That's right, just kind of weigh in, so these will be opt-in, um, apps, that staff will have the choice to install, uninstall, choose, not choose. Um, there's redundancy, so, um, depending on the application, some applications don't have to run on a phone. They can run on Chromebook, they can run on, um, not all the app, obviously, can't run on a computer, some of the communication devices. Some of the web interfaces, they're not, they, rave, and any of which geo-fenced, um, would have to, and then dual-factor authentication, um, um, pieces. Um, there's also some, um, like, so the alert pieces, that to me, the one that is, um, the. Most, um, valued proposition, right, we're gonna put in some ability for people to make alerts, it's also gonna create the opportunity for false alarm. One of the districts that rolled this out, um, had someone that was testing it, not realizing that it was gonna go out, so the ability to communicate out to staff and to families. We're gonna be installing this, you know, this will be a test, um, but for the most part, the, um. The alert app won't, the, the rave app won't go to families, there, there's, there's intermediate steps, so there's someone that panic button. Uh, and we go to school, and we go to, but we still have to say, we're gonna go to the training, you know, um, this is a test. Uh, but there is kind of a, uh, the other side of that is we've had multiple situations, uh, we're in a crisis, teacher in a classroom has a specific question. Um, when you're in lockdown, how you communicate directly becomes challenging, and so this will allow direct communication, and that field can be wrong, so. Um, that teacher or any staff member really won't be able to say, hey, listen, I'm in this situation, and that can go to. Police, ambulance, administration, um, and create, um, conversations for isolated areas. Where in the past, I might have to go through a phone or something like that, which would be maybe less accessible on a true lock.
And the beauty of the panic runs on phones is obviously, in prior places, we had like wireless panic runs. So, hope they work, battery's good, like, never handy, but again, some days, you know, you, you sit in there pressing on something, thinking the cow was coming. So we manage the phone, at least, you've got redundancy, obviously, it's a lot more fail-safe, depending on, it'll be a hardwired button, or a wireless button.
So just to summarize, I think the, the point of my question is, uh, you know, most concerned about, um, making sure we have protocols in place. So that if someone were to get a staff member's phone, they don't have unfettered access to some of this, so two-factor authorization is good. If you require login every time I open the app, right, if you, if it just stays logged in for seven days, or, until you turn that off. Then you could potentially have a security problem, so I guess, the final question is, do we have a protocol for onboarding new software to make sure that there are security? Uh, step measures in place so that people can perhaps get into someone's device and access all of these apps?
So I'd say, it's not a blanket, because some of the, like, so the. This security software is geo-fenced, so getting into it, you're not on our campus, creates a different level of access than when you're on. Sure, um, things like the communication app is gonna require, uh, multiple level, levels of authentication. Uh, where, like, you might be able to hack them with a phone, but it may not, you know, you get, maybe the secondary, whether that's. Depending on the price, or maybe face, maybe fingerprint, and maybe password, some of that is going out of our control, based on how the, uh, user sets up their security. So that is going to be, kind of, as you said before, as all of these tools start to include apps. As they start to include multiple other bases, um, how we manage through different pieces of an evolving conversation. Um, and some of it also is, this is going to be a choice by staff, they own the device, we can't necessarily require them to do that, and so when we start saying. These might be core mission critical, uh, we did it even with two-factor authentication, when we rolled that out and said this is mandatory, there was kind of a transition period where we had to provide staff with. At least, um, it was pretty short, but provide them with at least some alternative conversations on, if you don't want to do this. Because right now, our two-factor authentication includes your device, your own personal device, if you refuse to do that, or, um, you don't have a device. Uh, we had to provide some alternatives, I, I don't think there are anybody now using those alternatives, or, I, there was a few things in the beginning, like, convenience. Which is why all of these things were staffs, anyway, uh, you know, which is, we're on the, the. Uh, early adopter phase, but I would say now I'm at meeting edge phase, we are adopting apps, uh, after. There's been some track record and some kind of user, um, experience that we can learn from, and how we will use them now.
I don't want to piggyback on Tom's, um, and back to the substitute teacher, because if we're using these apps. And they're coming in, they're not going to have it on their phone, we're not gonna sit there for fifteen minutes in the morning and put it on their phone. Can we ensure that there are alternatives for them when they're in the building, so that that's provided, and then again, um, a staff member that doesn't want it on their phone. Um, I just want to make sure that our substitutes have every opportunity for safety that our regular teachers have, um, and staff members have every day. So if there's something, maybe you have to purchase something, um, that's handed out like your key for the day. Um, you get this, you get this, this is your day, get back to us at the end of the day.
There's a spectrum too, so if you're building sub.
Well, that'd be different.
Be a little different.
Yeah.
Um, we haven't necessarily, uh. As Mr. Martino said, the rollout of this has created some interesting conversations of what was a permanent sub, you know, like, you're building subs. You clearly have defined permits, I'm here here for six months for a teacher that's out on the league. But you might, but you might be here daily, but you come every day, or eighty percent, like, at one point, and. The communication apps, we would not give to subs unless they were that permanent, so you would take over the responsibility of the teacher, as a building sub, you would not necessarily have. The communication where you could text back and forth with a group of parents, but when you get into the security app, you know, what does that look like, what's our protocol? Because whether you have it on your device or not, where you are in the building, how much training you had, you may have, again, that protocol on. In, um, in middle school, you, the team is responsible, instructional team may be responsible, or, you know, there's someone in that building that's tagged with. There's a sub here, and this is how we're gonna handle it.
Even if it's grade level, you know, there.
But it's probably not gonna be the app itself, because that will require some training, uh. And again, if you're here all the time, but if you're a, let's say, a college student that comes home for three weeks and subs with us, you, you may not get that app on your phone. Um, there'll be another protocol that you follow for that rave specific one, but those are things that we haven't fully worked through yet, um, so maybe there is a way for them to do that.
I mean, all of our phones have, phones in the classroom, they are personalized, there's always nine ones, I mean, there's all, all the. Our old school stuff still exists, it exists.
Right, this is gonna be in, in addition to, not instead of.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, um, next we have Portrait of a Learner, for businessman.
Well, uh, so, board will remember. That. We started working on this back in the summer, really, uh, and we had multiple surveys that went out. Uh, one, beginning of the process, one at the end, we conducted twelve student focus groups. We had five staff focus groups, three community focus groups, and a board presentation back on January twenty-seventh. Uh, the process was overseen by a representative, a group that represented a variety of different constituencies, including Dr. Chiopetta. Uh, and then outside, so a lot of districts, um, we've sent multiple surveys out, um. Again, at the beginning of the process and at the end, overall, the feedback was very positive, um, some of the questions that we had, uh, were based on clarification, specifically things like. Uh, what is an empowered learner and an innovative problem solver, and those are really good questions that we. Um, are hoping to work to define over the next few years, and it will look different based on the age appropriateness, um, of the students and the class they're in. There's gonna be a lot of different kind of, um, iterations of what a, um, a problem solver looks like, and that may look very different in, um. Our, our woodshop class, or our, um, drone class than it does in an A P English class. But we want our students to be problem solvers and empowered learners in all of the different environments, so, uh. So we created a cooling off period just to make sure that we gave the community opportunities for feedback that was shared. It's on the website. The plan moving forward would be to give the board. The opportunity to weigh in and officially adopt this this evening and then. Really, a whole next school year would be these conversations about what grade do you teach, what's classes do you teach, what is an innovative? Learner or an empowered learner, what is an innovative problem solver? And to give teachers time to practice. And talk through what that looks like in the curriculum and see it show appear. And then you'll start to see that work into our curriculum. It'll work into. Conversations like tonight, where our students, the the ultimate head student, tell you. What that innovative problem solver looks like. And when you look at, I know a few who were able to attend the senior project. Really, the goal is to have some version of not that sophisticated at different levels, but you should be able to walk into a classroom. They're going to say to you, today I'm an innovative problem solver and this is what we're doing, or. This is how I'm collaborating and where it's a meta cognitive. It's not just something adults build in for students to learn, but the students know why they're learning. So that's kind of where we're at.
Do you have that in you about?
I didn't make a handout for you for tonight. Please on the website and certainly send me the links to all of this. I don't know what this is. So I would point you back to, actually, we have it up here. So this is the presentation, I can go through it, I'm happy to take a long time, but I can send a seat. So this is the presentation that gives the board back in January. That talks you through Dr. McEwen's work, about what this is, but. Yeah, in general, we want to make sure that when students leave us, that these are the traits. That they're prepared. When we say you're prepared to function in a twenty first century environment. These are the skills. In addition, all the curriculum and content knowledge, you may forget. You started World War Two based on multiple different perspectives, but these are the inner character traits and mindset. Structures that we want to walk away with.
Was it a requirement for the NEAS?
This is something that NEAS wants, make sure that districts are thinking about and. We're not doing this just because of NEAS, but it is. A component what NEAS wants us to do, to speak to.
Anyone else have questions? Next, we have approval of the minutes for April seventh, twenty twenty five, regular meeting for the Board of Ed.
The Board of Ed approved April seventh, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes.
Thank you, Steve, for a second. Thank you, Heather. Any comments or questions? Right, all those in favor? Right, Carrie's. Next, we have information and proposals for committee reports, policy and curriculum committee, Ms. Heather Dwyer.
This evening, policy and curriculum met to discuss more five thousand series policies. Under the category of student rights, we did complete a block of policies that. Will be coming to this committee as a first read once we've got those reviewed, okay? The other thing that you will see before you when I tell this, our committee is the reason for that, the place, yeah, though. But we are up to our second read of. Several policies, so that included the. Thirty-two ninety-two investment of funds policy, and this was regarding the inclusion of an educational expense account. Alongside our capital expense account. That was the, that was the number of existing policy. We also have a number of policies related to student health. That have previously been reviewed by DNC and have been looked over by CADE. While they were also, as a reminder, many of them were also reviewed by Dr. Sam. Are there any questions about policies?
So I have a question on the. Investment of funds. So throughout this document, there's reference to majority vote of members. However, when we get to the educational expenses, it's two thirds majority vote. And so a couple of things, one, unwind the deviation in the language. And are these weighted votes? Because how? Two thirds of mine mind with the weighted vote starts to get really complicated. So can you please walk me through? The committee's thinking.
So the reason for the deviation, and that is in the educational expense accounts, because we wanted. Because this this account is much more open ended than a capital expense account, we put money into a capital non recurring expense account. We must spend it on capital. But as per the statute, to put it in the next educational expense account, there's very little guidance on what you can use it for. You could use it for anything. And so the committee's feeling was that we wanted to have some restriction on this account. We didn't want it to be. Extremely open ended. Our thought was that we wanted it being to be. Reserved for special education expenses. I felt that was a good use of this type of account. But understanding that, you know, there may be situations where, you know. Want to hire staff, you know, there may be other situations that come up. We wanted it to have a higher bar to clear, to use this money for.
So two thirds is considered a higher bar?
Yes.
So again, though, it's a weighted vote.
So yes, there would be math to do. There, yeah, I mean, many of our policies are majority or two thirds, I do. Sometimes you'll see me with a little stretch.
That statute, the state just said it's that.
But ten years ago was, was the same.
I'm less concerned about the weight, I'm just concerned that that's. That's, that's a, it's just different from the rest. I don't want to, I understand, I repeat the theory, okay? And I severe, even at at budget referendum, you know, figuring out math.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just, it starts to get a little, as long as there's clarity and.
Yeah, that is the reason for. That is the reason we did it that way. If anybody here feels that there should be a higher bar or should be the same bar as a regular vote, like I guess. But that, that's something we could discuss.
Why is the bar higher on that education because it's so open?
Yes.
Let me, if I could, I'll share what influenced my thinking on that. And that was a story that Mr. Smith had told about when. This legislation first came out. I'll let you tell it if you're willing, but some of your colleagues actually had concerns. About this legislation passing.
For example, this board that I think is extremely fiscally responsible could spend five years building this account up. The next board could decide, we want to make the budget zero next year, and we're going to use that fund to buy down any cost expenses. And then kind of that backstop that we've spent a lot of years. Now, you might need that, let's say there's a hurricane or there's something, we have some emergency, it might be reasonable to spend some of that on all of it. It's a true emergency, but there's also going to be this attractive. Narrative, let's use that because we want to get to a two point nine budget. And so that's kind of where the the conversation around two thirds is.
But on the flip side, right, what I'm also concerned about is. Is that, and I totally understand that thinking. But it also then empowers chipping down the budgets in other areas. So I just want to be very conscientious of the double side to that sword. Because that's exactly what potentially could happen, right? And I'm not saying it's not important, I'm not saying I'm not behind it. I just want to make sure that there's full clarity why the bar is being set higher on that relative. To other potential uses of that money in situations that it could be.
And. You know, frankly, another board could come in and revise this policy. We wanted to set a baseline, this is a higher bar.
And just ask is the overall consensus that that is appropriate? That the two thirds is appropriate?
Certainly was the consensus and infancy, we can certainly pass.
That's just a question. Keep me talking through your concern about it. I don't know if there would be, but what I heard is they want it, the the higher bars then set so people can't come in and use that money. To whittle down a budget. So if that is secured revenue, you don't get the two thirds, so you, that's maintained. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that budget isn't going to get whittled away in other areas. So that that's the piece in my mind. It's it is, it's a safeguard of that revenue, of that money. But at the end of the day, if people want to cut the budget, they're going to cut it. That's protected, which has. And it's protected in a good way, but it also has the potential implications to other areas of. Educational community. I I just want to make, put that out there.
If that's a concern, I feel like then. You know, you could lower that standard if your philosophy is, I support. Lowering the budget by, you know, taking reserve funds to buy down next year, which I think. This board doesn't feel that way. I mean, but you, to your point. That chipping down of the budget, if that's going to happen in future boards, that's going to happen one way or the other. So I'd rather kind of keep the reserves.
I just wanted clarity, because as I read through that document, it's majority, 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 then you get to one other section, it's two thirds. So I needed to understand the rationalization of why that was different. I appreciate the the energy and the thinking behind it and the rationale behind it.
Just, I think also what came up is you can suspend any policy for any predetermined amount of time, right? So, and that's a two thirds vote. So even if it wasn't, like, we could just make it anything and just be like, you know what, let's just spend that policy.
So our policies have to be approved to third.
Majority.
So we could change this policy for majority at that point.
That would require two thirds, like you're, you're suggesting the suspension came.
No.
That's what we just heard, majority.
You said, I can change the policy anytime, but majority.
You can suspend it.
Policy requires two thirds.
Yes, we could write a new policy, bring it through first and second rate.
Alright, any other questions on these secondary policies? We're also going to have an opportunity to discuss it again when we come to some kind of vote. Alright, next we have the G S P S feasibility study committee. I think Mrs. Rogers is giving the report tonight.
The G V S P S feasibility study committee met on Tuesday, April twenty second here. The primary goal of the meeting was to review the current status of the study and TechTom presented their initial concepts for possible. Renovation or new construction. They shared multiple scenarios along with the challenges that each scenario presents. Further research is is ongoing into possible suitable alternative sites. The overview is on the webpage. The committee has added a meeting on May fifth at five o'clock. To further explore some of the possibilities and solutions to the challenges the scenarios present. This meeting is open to the public with the exception of an executive session. In addition to the May fifth meeting, there will be a meeting on Wednesday, April thirtieth, this Wednesday, from four to six at Gainfield. That meeting is by invitation only and board members are invited to attend. There is a community conversation on Thursday, May twenty second, from six to seven PM at LMES.
So the last two community conversations, the question about whether or not it would be polls happening within the. The teachers in the districts has come up. And I believe that in both instances, it was communicated thus forthcoming. I'd like to understand what that status is, because I definitely think that there's a very strong pulse, at least in those meetings and people that have approached me. In the community about really ensuring that the voice of the teacher is heard when we start thinking about this. Concepts. I know that the think tanks are happening, which I think are great, and and the fact that those have been shared is is really good, but. You just speak a little bit if you know, and maybe that's coming up. And what the status of the poll is and how that feedback is being taken into consideration. So there actually was quite a bit of discussion about this at the meeting, I believe. Is the video online? You can watch the video to hear.
Maybe Mrs. Mabley and I, I don't think the video was up today.
Okay, I was going to say you can watch the video online to hear some of the. Talk about that, but Mr. Romeo had a couple of good points about. Maybe, I guess, was tapping the brakes a little bit on that for right now.
And then necessarily giving teachers the. Have having them both, something that they didn't understand fully yet.
So just so that you're aware, I think there are people in the community that have gone through this. We've heard from two districts, right? And I think their perspective is how critically important at some point. That teacher perspective is relative to the height of things, the placement. You know, as much thinking and information is being. Digest ingested and digested into these plans. I think maybe an update on this kind of status of that poll could be shared if it comes up again, because I anticipate it will be asked again. Go ahead, Heather, and then Sally.
Yeah, I mean, I think the value of the committee, the values of the committee were definitely, you know, who walked in here from staff. About what their opinion was. I think really the big concern that came up. See that. Or to watch the video, the big concern that that came up is, right now, all options are on the table. But several of those options are not going to be feasible. Just due to site constraints, you know, that sort of thing. So before we go out and poll like, hey, like this option, and this option, and this option, I think we really have to do. Good job of understanding those constraints, communicating those constraints. And saying, and presenting it more as a. Here's some options, here's the pros and cons, and and then what's your feedback? Based on that. So the work of the committee right now. Up until this point, it's been very open ended, and everything's on the table. And I think, you know, we're going to start, you know, coming up against barriers and. Roadblocks, and we're going to steer towards some options just based on practicality, so. Where, what, where, what?
Yeah, I was very surprised with that, says, I can't remember who said it, but it was. We've been sitting in all of these meetings and, you know, there's this sort of like nine by nine matrix of of all of the different things and like, I couldn't actually. It would be hard to voice an opinion one way or the other, even if some teachers that were there with all of that information. And so was the idea of. Yeah, there was going to be real space and like, can we actually do it? Do we have the space to do it in my school? Should that even be an option, having people vote on kind of thing that. It was kind of setting people up to be teachers up to be in a spot where they're voting on something that we actually don't know if it's feasible.
And having to carry the weight of it.
Yeah.
That weight of that decision and that poll resting on, well, the teacher said this, I think.
So it was more getting things kind of pared down into like more, what what other way, really, most requested options. But not, 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 not listening to that. That's, that's role one.
Do we have sites available?
It's a good question and. We're looking into it. T B D, yeah, well. Kind of, you know, we're exploring different things and this committee will talk about it and maybe the board is going to talk about it.
It's a meeting near you.
Yeah. The think tank, I think, I think it's going to come up, but I mean, I think take the whole purpose is to have the town officials and the board members and. Administration there talking about what's on the table. We are very, right, not specific sites, yeah.
But they come up even in the community conversations or nineteen meters.
Any other questions?
Just, so I was having to be at that meeting and I felt like the consensus would you, if you're going to poll it very. Side was that happened to be at that meeting and I felt like the consensus would you, if you're going to poll a very specific group of individuals. Such as to say, teachers that you would want, like, no one should be given an option to certainly vote. On narrowing down the plans, you know, we could do six things and the teachers come in and say, well, we should do these two. I thought it was articulated that. We. Pull at some point, make sure the teachers give the input. And then the committee takes that input and then comes up with the recommendation that then this board votes on. So. Don't want it to seem like they're sort of voting early on one of the solutions.
You just have to go to a public. Uh, vote.
A referendum. Yeah, so the 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 process is that the feasibility committee is gonna hopefully come up with a recommendation to the board. Right? And then the board will come to a decision. And then whatever the board decides, if it's a new school or renovation or whatever, that needs a bond, that will go to. Referendum, including if it's gonna buy property, sell property, all of that has to go through referendum. That's the ultimate call, right? And you, yep, any other questions? Yep, I know, um, John and Sharon, you are S V P that you're coming on Wednesday. Thank you so much. If anyone else wants to go to Think Tank, please. Let me know so we make sure there's some space for you, but um. If it's possible for you guys, if you can come to the May fifth. Feasibility study meeting, um, I think it's gonna be a good one um for you to attend. Here, so it's Monday. At five o'clock. We're working on taco salad. Yeah, something like that, um, but there will be an executive session and the board is also invited to that executive session. Yeah, I'm gonna have to pick. Yeah. So there's, isn't isn't there a committee meeting with people who sit. We get the towns on the board of selectmen at that meeting. They won't be able to put that.
Ed, if he goes, he should go to board.
We 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 pulled committee members to this added meeting. It was not original. It's shown. We polled all committee members on a series of dates. Isn't the date that had the most attendance? So I can't speak this specifically.
I I know, I mean, I know Ed, Benny or both of them. I mean, Benny does that.
Uh, next we have superintendent's report. Superintendent Smith.
Like we get to this part on the attorney bin, shared a little bit. I just want to reiterate what Mr. Nelson said about the district art show. Um, that is a massive amount of work for our students. Uh, staff and volunteers, and I think it's something very unique to Region fifteen that we have in one space. K twelve um art, actually, I want to say even some K um art that is all in one space and it's a massive thing. So um it is not small. It is a huge undertaking by a lot of people um to create something very special for um our district. And so I just want to thank everybody for the that contributed and for our students. Um, remind everybody referendum is May seventh. Uh, we will not have a board meeting before that. Not a full board meeting. There'll be clearly lots of committees that we need to form then, but um. May seventh is the referendum. We started this week with uh smarter balance testing and then um. Act and uh final stretch from now until the end of the year, there are. A three week stretch, four week stretch. It's gonna be a spring, so take a deep breath and um appreciate the time that all of you always dedicate. But in advance for the next couple of weeks uh for your time and I hope your families remember what you look like and then you can see them all again and.
Any questions on the superintendent report? Nope. Uh, next we have board member comments. Let's see.
The feasibility, but I saved it for board member comments, because it's it's really kind of just. Lovely communication. So as mentioned, I went to the community conversation. Um, and there I learned that the. June twenty twenty six, there is potentially, and it's hard for legislation, so I'm probably not, but. Potentially a bill and a to pass that will go into effect that may alter the reimbursement rate. Perhaps, I don't know, do something in terms of funding. Um, so that uh. I think that was mentioned in one of your uh superintendent's uh weekend emails. So that's sort of. A little nervous for the first time, um, because of course now there'll be some deadline that we have to, in my mind, at least have to work. Then I started to think about how much time we will need as a. Word to have a poster, a community information campaign, right? So whatever the final option is that is whittled down. I would have to go to referendum. I imagine it's not like we vote on the, we vote on the budget, April seventh, and then a month later. You know, if it passes, it's four weeks free because people are really on spring break, right? So. Like, how much, how much of our one runway are we giving? To people to get themselves informed to vote on this building project, right? So I also feel like, you know, they're. So it's like about a year from now, but not really, because we have to give some time for this public information campaign. I also um. Went to the feasibility meeting last week and um was thinking, you know, how we're all really new to this. Um, as a town and as elected officials, we haven't done anything like this in a long time. Uh, I started reflecting on the scheduling that we went through for the current capital bonds. I know there were a lot of meetings where. You know, we have to like, the motion be written out. It was half a page long because it had to be perfect, because it had to, and that. There were deadlines that, you know, we had the bonds consultant or bond agent come in and. And then we had deadlines, I think, for the architect pool. I'm not even sure if that was tied. To getting the bonds in place and time and and maybe the bond for this new project. Does have as tight a timeline timeline, but I was thinking, is there a timeline? Or we want to, we want to get our proposal, hopefully pass referendum and submitted by the end of the month, so it beats this deadline that Hartford now may give us. Like, um, so I was, this all sort of swirling um. Through uh through my head and I started to think, I know Tech Tom has a. A schedule available, some of the sort of high level dates, but from a board perspective. Like, I I would really like the committee to be able to give to the board like a list of. Sort of board meetings, like I know when our board meetings are, right through pretty much. Here, we can figure them out and say, like, okay, by this date, this board meeting, you will have this, because you are going to need to take. Action or do something like I I I really would just feel more comfortable. We just started to sort of. Flash that out because we may need time. Like, I don't want to get something on, you know, March first and then have to be like, okay, this is somewhere between. I don't know, millions and millions and millions of dollars and have little time. To sort of digest it or push back. I don't know. So I I am just really asking my board members that are on that committee to think about, can we get a schedule? For board. For board, what are what are board actions that are gonna be required? And that way you all can let us know, like, be behind schedule. So.
Any other board member comments? Okay, uh, next we have comments from citizens. The Board of Education will recognize citizens of Middlebury and Southbury. And citizens are asked to state their name, their town of residence, and to limit their comments to three minutes. Any citizens? Um, next we have regular business requiring board action may have a motion for approval of policy. Three two ninety two investment of funds.
Move that the Board of Education upon recommendation of the Policy and Curriculum Committee. First policy, three two nine two investment of funds as presented.
Second, second by Heather Rogers. Any comments or discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any nays? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Um, next may have approval of the policies that are listed on the agenda.
Move that the Board of Education, uh, can I do the same thing? Probably not.
Go ahead. Just read it.
Move that the Board of Education upon recommendation from the Policy and Curriculum Committee. Approved policies fifty one forty one dot two administering medication. Fifty one forty one dot two three one psychotropic drug use. Fifty one forty one dot two five students of special health care needs slash food allergy management. Fifty one forty one dot two seven first aid slash emergency medical care, use of automatic external defibrillators. Fifty one forty one dot two eight sudden cardiac arrest. Fifty one forty one dot three health assessments and immunization. Fifty one forty one dot four reporting of child abuse and neglect. Fifty one forty one dot seven students sports concussion and head injury. Fifty one forty one dot one two four breathalyzer testing. And fifty one forty one dot five suicide prevention and intervention as presented.
Thank you. So that's second by Heather Rogers. Um, any comments, questions on any of the policies that are listed? All right, all those in favor? Any nays? Any abstentions? All right, it is unanimous. Thank you. Um, and finally, may have motion for approval of Regional School District Fifteen Portrait of a Learner.
Just gonna keep going.
Yep.
Move that the Board of Education can approve of Regional School District Fifteen Portrait of a Learner as presented.
Second, thank you, Heather. Um, any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
So um, and I'm sorry, I know we had the brief earlier, we've moved past before I was able to kind of formulate my question. So sorry for not getting about it earlier. When, you know, I had raised a question earlier, um, more of a concern that um. You know, I I do worry with this that. It's another layer. It's another structure that we put on our educators. On top of thinking classrooms, on top of theories of action, on top of, you know, curricular changes that we've been making. Um, you know, and I know our educators are up for it because they, you know, they they've run at this pace and I I see them thriving at this pace, but I do. I do worry about that. So when I raised that question at an earlier presentation. You had talked about and even showed us a draft of like a. Stained glass window, like. Madonna kind of infographic you're working on. Um, and I haven't, I haven't seen the latest on that, but that's. Um. That's information I probably would have liked to revisit tonight just to understand. Again, how this layers in kind of set my mind in that we're not. Overwhelming people with yet another kind of. Structure here. Um. I don't know if you can talk to that briefly uh for the vote.
Yeah, I would say the short answer is that. You're gonna walk toward the rock. So you start next year, which really just help it like the entire year. Say that we like, we do, a lot of what's in that document is not something new to us. This is a way to make it clear, the community, parents, but really to the students. You do this activity. You think you're in math class, learning. Four plus eight is twelve. But that's true. But outside of that, there's a whole that that teacher designed that lesson so that you and I work together. We're gonna bring Sally in. And we're gonna be able to work with different people and those skills. And so it's not so much that this is like a new um educational approach. Some of those things in there might. Force us to expand some of our approaches, but a lot of it is, how do we become more like um. Metacognitive about the work that we're already doing. And we're not gonna. Force this retrofit in. What we're going to say to staff is take some time to think about these things. Those questions that came in from community members. About what does it mean to be an innovative problem solver? I'm not walking into convocation next year saying this is an innovative problem solver and as teachers, we're asking to do that. I would tell you that those structures that you mentioned about thinking classrooms and illustrative mathematics and um. A lot of our other, the the side work, a lot of that is about being an innovative problem solver. But we don't talk about it with students that way. And that's really the shift here is the dialogue that students are gonna have with each other. They're already embedded in a lot of our pieces. And we're gonna give staff next year um to really wrestle with that and to think about that in space. Um, to do all the things that, like you said, they're doing right now. Um. And just to kind of have it as a lens that we look at the work that we're already doing. And then what things do we need to bring in to push a little bit on? Are we really, can we be stronger in our innovative problems? Could you take that lesson that we did last year that we did last week and could we push on that a little bit? Um, and make it incremental piece, but this is really like a three year plan for us to start to look at, and in some ways even longer than that. Um, because there's, there's gonna be a journey. When you talk about what do we want a kindergarten in our schools today? To know and be able to do with a graduate. I can't tell you what the world's gonna look like until we issue that. I can tell you it's gonna look different. I can tell you that some of the things that we're teaching to seventh graders today are going to be obsolete when our kindergartners graduate. And so how are we preparing them? You know, that Gretzky analogy, we gotta skate where the puck is. And this is to help us start to push our own thinking about what we're doing, but it's not gonna be like a new initiative. Um, for an initiative sake, I think if anything, this will be. A bucket that we can start to think a lot of things that we're already doing. That's why that mosaic um. Next year, maybe that that's a community like communal as far as like our schools are gonna. How do we start to connect dots so that you don't see parents, staff, students? I'm going to math class and then after math class, I go to language arts class and then I go to science class. There are three lines that run through all of those things about how you think, how you work with others. That's what we want to start to to. Decomartmentalize how we teach students, because once in high school. Like, no one goes to math class at your job, right? Like, math is woven in to the conversation with everything else. Um, and so that's kind of the. The structure that this becomes the foundation. Yeah, some of that helps.
No, it does. And there's nothing in there that's offensive, leaving like it's, it's all, it all makes a lot of sense. But when I hear you talk about kind of an incremental path of the next couple of years. You know, if the board takes action on this and this becomes. Really the transformative, you know, platform, I think you you're describing. You know, I curi- I'm curious because some of these are so such abstract concepts. You know, has there been thought given to how we are going to evaluate and like, what does success look like? Three years from now, at the end of the three year plan, how do we say like? Yes, we are thinking more creatively because, you know, we're using this benchmark to measure. The effort that we put in the last three days.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the um. Maybe pitfalls that we are very conscious of is I don't want a rubric or a checklist that says Tom is creative. You know, because I think there's so many definitions. So what does that look like? And I think that's when you get to that senior experience. We're gonna have lots of different ways. Here are some curriculum documents where we talk about how we build in innovative learning. Here are some videos. Here are some students that are gonna stand in front of you and tell you how they're able to work with others. You know, and I think that's the piece is, you know, there are. Metrics. Uh, that we can look at. These aren't in isolation. Um, but they're also not discrete skills. There are some of within these concepts, creative problem solving. So if you look in our illustrative mathematics curriculum. That, again, maybe we're gonna push on, but there's examples in there that force students to be creative. Right? Like, you have to explain to your, find three people that solve that math problem differently than you. That gets into how we kind of assess students are being able to be creative in their thinking. But it's not a right or wrong answer to continue. And so like, there's not gonna be a test that a parent gets home that says, here's my test, I'm innovative problem solver. You know, I got an eighty seven. You know, I think it's gonna be more like, what does that look like? And what does that look like when you're in twelfth grade? And what does that look like when you're in third grade? And where did you start? How you grow? I think that's some of the reason of adopting this is to start that conversation. No one's gonna hand that to a teacher and say, start doing this. Like, that is. You know, failing, right? And and. Were my my friends in Hartford, Washington are gonna give us some new things to start to do in July that I don't even know yet. Uh, I think one of the other questions that we're gonna come to this board with is. And and this is a start, this document. We're gonna have to take some things out. Because if we continue to teach, I was a history teacher, we teach chronologically. Chronologically, the students today have a lot more history to learn than the students twenty years ago. And you can't just keep adding new dates. You have to start to look at what are the things that we want students to know and be able to do. And what are we able to remove? Because we know students are gonna be able to learn that just in time. You know, I'm looking at some people here who. I don't know, we're computer programmers and you know, you're not coding today in a language that you learned in college. It's not. So you have to be an adaptive learner, and that's something that we need to teach to our students. Um, and make sure that our curriculum encourages that. Otherwise, we're gonna create a generation of students in the world that happened when they were in high school, not when. Otherwise, we're gonna create a generation of students in the world that happened when they were in high school, not when they're.
So you clearly have like a strong vision for how this would be used. Certainly a better understanding than what I have. I would ask if the board would entertain maybe an amendment like. This almost makes it sound like it's an endorsement from the board, but this was obviously recommended to us either from the committee. Or from you, so just like a previous motion, you know, upon recommendation from policy curriculum. I'd love to put in this motion, who's recommending we pass this, because I don't feel like I have. The deep enough knowledge set to just endorse this, like, without, you know, acting on someone's like. So, so who could we say this was recommended to the board by?
The, the Portrait of a Learner Steering Committee.
So if it pleases the chair, I'd like to, uh, make a amendment.
We're in discussion, the motion on the table is to, as the thread on the agenda, so there's a motion on the table that's been. Moved and seconded. So Tom wants to do an amendment.
I'll withdraw if you want to keep. Okay. All right, thank you. So then I would make a motion to amend this motion. To read, uh, move that the Board of Education. Upon recommendation from the Portrait of a Learner Steering Committee. Approve. The Regional School District Fifteen Portrait of a Learner as presented.
All right. Is there a second? Tom's amendment.
I don't think so.
No, second?
They all shouted at once. Okay, Steve, I heard him first. All right, so. We'll have a discussion on Tom's proposed amendment, any? Discussion. But Sharon.
So I, I appreciate the amendment, so thank you. Philosophically, I'm behind it conceptually, right? It, it's interesting because my mind kind of went where Tom's was in the discussion. What is the impact to educators with this document? Because if you're telling me that we're actually already doing it with illustrative math. Like, what else? What else is coming and is it that the things that we're doing? Are going to continue to evolve and adapt? But there'll be extra consciousness or conscientiousness, whatever. To pull that thread through, because if you're saying to me that it's happening in a sort of map and I see it, right, when it comes home, like how. The answers are being written, just the, the things that you've presented here, like, okay, so. This is structurally on paper now, okay? But how is it going to impact the teacher's day to day? What's the impact to the student in the classroom? And that's very different than how are we evolving our curricula? To ensure that they walk out of here with the skill they need, right? Um, so, so I do have. I just wanna piggyback on Tom's, um, comments, I do have concerns over. What this could end up looking like and I don't want it to be like a checklist, and I know you're, you're saying that it's not. But something else is coming, right? PD days, other things, and how is that actually? Being integrated into the curriculum that we're already investing in, so that's kind of my thought there. The other piece is, I'd like to better understand how this is, just like education evolves. Just like how our environment evolves, how is this document gonna be evolved because? Um, when I look at that, it's very aligned with all the things that you see in business, innovation, communication, collaboration. You could literally take that and synthesize it and you're seeing that in business, private sector. So how is? A lot of this is gonna change, just every five years, every three years. What is the committee's plan to revisit this? Is it annual, like, what's the return, how are you seeing the pull through? I really like to better understand. Philosophically, because I don't want to endorse this and then it just sit there for however many years.
Nothing drives me nuts more than a lot of nice documents that are not operational arms. You know, I think we could put together a really nice infographic, laminate, make some nice posters of it. But if it's just something on a wall, then like, who cares, right? So, and, and to your point, a lot of these are, um. Kind of, uh, nebulous words. Right, that we all think are really important, but we really, um, have a hard time defining what they were. And that's where I think one of, um. The things that's really important. So I say us in this, speaking on behalf of a whole lot of people, that. I'm not ruling this out, like, we're adopted this, start implementing this next week, like, that is not how this is gonna roll, because I think to your point. I don't want to tell kindergarten teachers who've been teaching for twenty years. They, they can teach in collaboration, like, you cannot teach kindergarten without collaboration, right, like that is, so. But one of the things that we haven't done is talk to students about why it's important in kind of these. This lesson today isn't just about fill in the blank, it's also about these other things. And when you, if you remember, and I think there's a link in it, um, but. When students start talking about, I grew this year as a problem solver. Or I was afraid to work with other people in my class and now I know I can. Like, I need students to be able to talk to that, and I think to, to, to your point, like, and this is gonna evolve. Because twenty years, oh, we're not really twenty years, well, but those weren't necessarily corporate ones, words either, you know, that. We're gonna continue to look at. What is it that our students need to do to be successful when they? Because. We have some tremendous needs and we saw something like. Our valuatorians were good schools, they are, are top ten, however you wanna rank your class. If they don't leave high school and college and be able to function in it, who cares, right, like? And I think that's the piece that. While it's really important, those hard skills, a lot of those soft skills. Um, which is kind of what's identified in this portrait. Um, are also a difference maker between students who become successful, however you define success.
So I, I totally support that. But it's the implications of the how. And that's what I'm not hearing.
So can I?
If I can just add though, because in order to create that environment, you have to coach and upscale. The professionals that are delivering it in the classroom. So is that a PD day? Is that going to come around in our budget? Now we're looking at. Other coaches, like, I'm not saying that's happening, but. Good, right, gets good and you need a starting point for sure. But we need to understand the how, or at least I do, I need to understand the how. And while we can endorse a piece of paper. Um, not just make it so simplistic. It is, I, I really need to understand the how and the implication, this goes back, I think, maybe to what I've heard you from you.
Yeah, no, you're.
What is the impact in the classroom, what's the impact to our staff and how is that? Those, those fundamental. Competencies and behavior is going to be implemented, so it actually becomes effective. That's what I'm not hearing and I'm sorry if I missed that.
So, um, to get very granular, um, we talked about a three year plan, so there's three years, first year is an awareness of. Those actual, um, competencies or, or the criteria, so that's next year. What are they? What are the words associated with them? So that's that awareness stage. Then year after, there's an implementation stage, so how do we start to put these into our classroom, into our curriculum? Um, and then the, uh, that's our transition year, and then the following year is like full implementation. Backing up, so next year, that awareness is to make people aware of what those are, the words that go along with that. Working with the ITLs, or our instructional teacher leaders that are in every academic area. Um, that range from kindergarten all the way up to twelfth grade, working with them on I can statements. And I can't say it's from, from a student's point of view. So looking at what that would look like for K two, what does that look like for group five, what does that look like for middle school, what does that look like for high school? For each one of those, um, competencies that are listed up there. So building those I can statements, um, as an ITL group, and then at the PD days. Spending time to then share that out with the rest of the teachers, so the teacher, the, the rest of the teachers have input on what those can look like. Taking that feedback back from the PD days with all the teachers to the ITL group, so we're refining those I can statements by grade level. So by the end of the follow, of next year, by the end of, um, the following year. We have that awareness of what they are, we've had, we have input on what those are, we have feedback on how do we make those better? So that for the following summer, some of the things that we can do is start infusing those into our curriculum documents, where do those show up? And working with teachers on, how do you make students aware? Because part of, of teaching is making things explicit. And so that idea of like being able to like work collaboratively, like, while kids could do that. I don't know how many kids could actually explain what they're doing sometimes when they are working collaboratively with one another, when they are. Talking about, um, you know, thinking about their thinking, when they are being able to, um, share something in multiple ways, being able to, for them to actually say. I can do these things, and so, um, that second year really is working with teachers who then work with students to implement those. Knowing that it's not gonna be perfect, but we're, we're working on that transition phase. For the following year to be like full implementation, everybody has had professional development, you have the statements written out. They're in documents where people could see, and it really is helping teachers understand that you're doing a lot of these things. But it's helping students understand that they're being, that they, that they can do these things. So there, there's a multi-year plan with making sure that everybody ha, everybody sees them, everybody has a touch point, everybody's able to give feedback before. It then becomes incorporated into curriculum documents. So there's a lot of work to do in the next couple of years, because if you go back and look at things that we've had previously, you're right. It was a piece of paper with a list of words and a, and a definition that never went anywhere, and so we don't want. This to end up being something like that, this has to be usable. And one way to do that is to put it in kid-friendly language, so kids can talk about it, teachers can. Talk about it, um, and have students be able to, to say, I mean, we do these things and it looks different, even though it's the same. Um, you know, same attribute, but it looks different in the different grade bands from K, from K all the way up to high school. And so what does that look like on that progression for each one of those things? So that's the work next year to do with ITLs, with feedback on, on all the teachers. And all the different academic areas.
Any other questions on the amendment?
So I, and I'll just say thank you for the explanation, and again, I, I don't wanna speak for anyone other than myself. But I, you know, so in passing this, if you know, that passes and this passes, um. You know, yes, it's not the blanket endorsement, but it's like, yes, we, we trust your vision on this, and like anything else. I think this is one where I would benefit from checking, whether that's at P and C or at this full board. Like, you know, a presentation actually, let's check in and see how this thing goes and, you know, pass, it's going.
Good idea, we're not here.
Yeah, I mean, it took some of us five or six years to get coaching. So I think you're gonna, there's a knowledge gap. Between your current vision and where I am, almost, that, you know, I just appreciate if you. Help me fill in the next couple of months and years.
If we.
Yep.
If, if we actualize this the way it should be, you're gonna see it. In a lot of presentations, not specifically about the vision of a, or a portrait of a learner, but it's going. Those elements, you're going to see similar now, we're talking about theories of action, you know, theories of action are even higher than this. And then this starts to translate down into.
Thank you.
All right. All right, any other discussion on the motion to amend? All right, so we will vote on the motion to amend, the original motion. All those in favor? We're voting on the motion to amend the original motion. Sorry, no, we're just voting on the motion to amend, Tom has suggested. Or move to add, upon recommendation of the Portrait of a Learner Steering Committee to the original motion. So we're gonna vote on that motion to amend. Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any nays, any abstentions? All right, so now the original motion has been amended. And the original, the motion now reads. Move that the Board of Education upon recommendation. Of the Portrait of a Learner Steering Committee. Approve the region, regional school district fifteen portrait of a learner as presented. All right, any discussion on the amended motion? No, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, any extensions? All right, it carries, thank you. Um, next we have announcement of future meetings, Monday, May twelfth, findings facility meets, uh, M I J at twelve o'clock. Also, Monday, May twelfth, P and C meets at the High School Media Center at six thirty. Followed by a regular meeting of the Board of Education at seven thirty. Um, where we will be having the year-end, end of year review and reflections of the superintendent and executive session. Uh, Monday, May twenty seventh, P and C meets at the Media Center at six thirty. So it's Tuesday, May twenty seven, thank you, Steve. Thank you. So Tuesday, May twenty seven, um, P and C meets at the, um, six thirty. We're not gonna be here on Memorial Day. And Tuesday, May twenty seventh, is our regular Board of Ed meeting, um, at seven thirty, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?